In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the time of the end of the website, audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If members of the public would like to participate in a public hearing, please email your questions, comments, prior to or during the meeting to our planning director, Gene Enright, who email addresses J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay. We are going to actually start with continued public hearings. So I'm gonna also make an announcement regarding public hearings. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations for number of people that may gather in place. This, these public hearings, both continued and new, of the North End of our planning board, will be conducted via remote participation. Specific information to general guidelines for remote participation by members of public and our parties within right and a requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For these public hearings, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on the television, Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandoverma.org. There will be no in-person attendance and members of the public, of applicants, or of members of the planning board. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. If you, of members of the public, would like to participate in these public hearings, please email your question or comment to Gene Enright, our planning director, at J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read and addressed during the hearing. If we have received any correspondence regarding any public hearings, we'll address that, what we've received, and anything that we received during the hearing. Okay, 1160 Great Pond Road, Brooks School, application for watershed protection special permit, and site plan review special permit under Chapter 195, Article 4, Part 5, Article 8, Part 3, Article 10, 195, 10.7, of the Town of North End of the zoning bylaw to authorize the phase redevelopment and reconstruction of certain existing developed areas of property, including relocation at the south entrance, removal and reconstruction building, accessways and landscape areas, improvements in installation of new drainage improvements and associated landscaping. Majority of the proposed work is within the general zone, with a small portion of reconstruction of walls, parking and landscape on the other edge of the non-disturbance and non-discharge zones. The project is located in the R1 residential one zone. But Gene, if you could tell us where we're at, then we'll address any outstanding issues, and then hopefully close the public hearing and build on the draft decision.
Anton, if I can just interrupt and take a roll call attendance, just to be certain. So I will call out the board members' names, if you can just respond with "I." Anton Goldberg?
I'm here.
John Simons?
I'm here.
Peter Boynton?
Here.
Ethan Mooney?
Here.
Aaron Preston?
Here.
Kelly Comia?
Here.
Okay. So for 1160 Great Pond Road, you have two draft decisions. Stormwater review has been completed, all department reviews been completed. I, on the draft decisions included Kate, but Kate, I believe you recused yourself last meeting, so I just want to confirm that.
I did, I did. I am recused from this one, thank you.
So in substitute of Kate, Kelly, you are a voting member on this application? As discussed previously, the project will require a common driveway special permit. The applicant has applied for that special permit and will be heard on the October 6 hearing date. The draft decision before you tonight conditioned prior to any site work that the common driveway special permit was approved and recorded prior to site work or building permit commencement. Since your last meeting, Peter has asked for follow-up questions related to the hydrant location plan reviewed at the last meeting. The packet includes material related to the additional hydrant located near the shoreline and the pipe that appears to run into the, from the hydrant to the lake. So I believe the applicant is prepared to respond to that, Anton. That's the only outstanding issue that I'm aware of.
Okay, so let's, let's hear from the applicant on that one piece. If there's anything else that's new, they can certainly add to that. Then we'll see if there are any questions, and if. And we'll go from there.
This is Andrew Leonard from AT Leonard Associates. We did some research with Brooks on the, the pipe and the hydrant down by the lake. What we found was, the hydrant is right at the location of the, an old boathouse location that related to the Russell property, which was pre-Brooks School in the early 1900s. I believe there's even a map that shows it at Town Hall, when we all could go back to Town Hall, that shows the location and the hydrant right at that location. Every record we have does not show that hydrant connecting into the town water system or related to any of the other hydrants that are pressurized on the hydrant map. What we don't know is if that hydrant is even functioning. It is not a hydrant that Brooks School uses. And I've been working with the school for, oh, over, never been used since I've been there. So Anthony Cleves and I, we could look into it further, once campus is opened, in terms of whether it is even functioning. But it is not part of the water system hydrants related to the fire department use or really any Brooks use. It seems to be a remnant from the previous property. Note that, and Peter had, at least partially.
Hi, this is Peter. Thank you, Eton. I'll just respond to that, if that's okay. So yes, I raised this because the applicant had helpfully provided a, a map showing the existing and future hydrants and had not included this one. And so that was the reason I asked the question. So this is very helpful to know that it's not part of the system. I think I heard an offer at some point in the future to investigate what it's doing, and if, if we can accept that offer, I, I, I think we should. And I don't have any other questions, and thank you for looking into that.
Great. John Simons, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great. Aaron, any questions or comments?
No, nothing further.
I don't have any. Kelly, any questions or comments?
I do not, no.
Okay, so why don't we get, actually, Gene, are there any public comments that have come in?
There are none.
Okay, so with no public comments, with no questions from the board, but all answers from third-party reviewers being, and departments being accounted for, can we get a motion to close the public hearing as to 1160 Great Pond Road and 1116 Great Pond Road, a watershed production special permit and site plan review special permit?
So moved. Second?
And motion made by Peter, seconded by John. We'll do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Eton, I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. So let us, we are gonna now review the decisions. Let's start with the site plan review special permit. Everyone should have this on some device or in paper. I just want to read that I'm doing it on my phone, to review the decision. And any comments, please make so that Gene can incorporate them.
Anton, can you repeat what we're starting with?
Yes, the site plan review special permit notice of decision, site plan review special permit. Does the petitioner have any comments about the draft decisions?
No.
Great. What we'd like to hear. Gene, can you remind us, is there, is there any conservation involvement here?
There is. There's a small section within the 100-foot. As the driveway kind of enters across that stone wall you saw on the site plan review, there's a small section there that is within the jurisdiction.
Do we have anything in the, in the site plan decision about conservation?
I think there's a finding of fact that they're before conservation. Maybe the applicant can update us where they are with them.
Sure, I can do that. We've had several meetings with the commission. So far, comments have mostly been around the satisfaction of the reviewing engineer and the satisfaction of the planning board, actually. So we have a meeting with them next week as a follow-up after hearing how the board feels about things this week.
Right, so the conservation administrator just indicated they like to get a sense of how the planning board is going to move on this action prior to them closing.
I don't see it as a finding of fact.
It's probably in the watershed one, but let me look. You're right, it's not listed, so I can add that.
Yes, please, thank you. Anybody have any comments, questions, items to change other than the norm, that conservation for the site plan review special permit?
Anton, I have just a very small one in paragraph four. I, this is probably nothing, but I appreciate your advice on this. If you go down, this is on, I think, the second page, bottom of the second. You go down five lines. It says, "The project engineer has certified belief that these design components will protect Lake Kachikowick." And it just struck me as odd wording that I haven't seen before. What I think I've seen before is, "The project engineer has certified that these design components will protect." I don't understand what the word "belief" is doing there.
Peter, what number are you referencing?
It's finding a fact number four.
Yeah. Did you see that, Eton?
Yeah, that, that's a good catch. I don't recall ever seeing a certified belief. I'm not sure that that really has much weight.
Well, that's kind of my concern. I'm not the duty attorney here, but struck me as odd, and unless there's a reason that that's there, maybe we could remove that word "belief." Gene, I, did you see where I'm referring?
Yes, and I took that right off of his correspondence. So Anthony, maybe you want to weigh in above that. I believe our town consultant has contested that she doesn't believe it'll degrade the lake either, so. So about that, number three, the stormwater manager designs and consultant concluded that there will not be significant degradation to the quality of, quality of water at Lake Kachikowick. That's our third-party reviewer. And the comment that I made in four came right from correspondence from the project engineer.
Yeah.
Anthony, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm just trying to find that, that letter for reference here.
The bottom of page two.
I think he's looking for his letter that he submitted.
Right, right, right. Thank you.
Yeah, I see, I see. That's how the letter was written, is that we've been in Bingham believes that the, the design components will protect Lake Kachikowick from any significant degradation of quality and quantity. So that's, that is our belief, yeah?
Yeah, so Eton, I, I, I just don't understand why we're getting certification of a belief instead of certification that the components will protect the lake. I mean, I, I find it odd, and it, I think undermines my confidence that we're not certifying the protection of the lake, we're certifying a belief. So I would ask that we remove the word "belief."
Upon components of the engineer's trust.
Yeah, that's fine. I think it's probably just a poorly worded, well-written letter.
Yeah. I think you're right. Yeah.
Okay, so let's make that amendment as well.
I, I agree, Gene, you know, upon, you know, the engineer.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the site plan special permit as amended? Moved by John? We got a second?
Yeah, and, frankly, that sounds a point two.
Aaron Kelly, someone want to second it?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, Kelly beat you to it. Seconded by Kelly. Vote. John?
John votes yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Eton, I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
All right, that one's approved. Let's go to the, let's go to the second permit, which is the watershed special permit.
That's the same comment would be applicable to number four on page two, in terms of belief that, to delete that.
Yeah, that's a lot of them all.
Gene, is, is the footer?
Yeah.
So I noticed the footer references, yeah, 2017, might be an old.
Yeah, I, I didn't delete the footer. I will delete that.
And can we add, again, especially of finding a fact regarding the, just before conservation?
Yep.
Can we get a motion to approve the watershed special permit as amended?
So moved.
Moved by John.
Come on, Kelly, you don't, so, there you go.
Second.
Roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
All right, that one is approved as well. Okay, Gene, is that all for 1160 Great Pond Road?
Yep, for the benefit of the applicants, I'm on vacation this week, so they will likely be time stamped on Monday. Your 20-day appeal period will begin then.
Great, thanks, Gina. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you guys very much. You did very well put together a project. Okay.
Thank you.
40 Flagship Drive, DWT Holdings LLC, application for site plan review special permit under Article 8, Part 3, and Article 10, 195, 10.7 of the North End of the zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of a 15,100 square foot single-stored metal building with associated parking, landscaping, utilities and stormwater management design. The primary use is of a proposed office to serve the applicant's constructing company. And the accessory uses our indoor storage for equipment and vehicles as well as outdoor gravel laid-out area, also to serve as a construction company. The property is located in the I-1 zone district.
Aaron, I apologize, but I believe you have to read the whole public hearing.
Again, even I did it before.
Yeah, I think for each public hearing, you have to.
Okay, that's redundant. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing, just like the last one, of the North End of our planning board will be conducted via remote participation. Specific information to general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with the right and the requirements to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website, www.northandoverma.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on the television, by tuning into Channel 8 on Comcast or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandoverma.org. No in-person attendance and members of the public or members of the board or applicant will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North End of the website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If any member of the public would like to participate in this public hearing, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our planning director, Gene Enright, who email is J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly.
All right, so for this public hearing, the stormwater and department review is now complete. A draft decision has been prepared. Since the time of the staff report, we have received an updated grading plan, which includes a six-foot stocking fence to the rear of the property. And what struck me since the last meeting was rooftop mechanical equipment. So I have asked the applicant to confirm that there will be no rooftop mechanical equipment. So it'll be all ground-mounted, and I think that's important, given the neighborhood of the, the project location. So a draft decision has been prepared.
Okay. Um, have there been any public comments that have come in, either in prior dates or today?
There has nothing for this project.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments that they want to ask of the applicant?
I have two questions, primarily for Gene, is when the latest grading plan, because the site is slope, do you feel comfortable that all possibilities have been addressed? Because, you know, the risk of a problem grows when you have a slope, and, you know, I just don't know whether there are any, like, things that are close here or whether it's pretty clean.
So early on, we knew that, back in the 90s, there was some site clearing that was conducted, and erosion did escape the lot down to a wetland, and so some detention bases were put in place on the lot. It's remained undeveloped since the early 90s. So I did alert our stormwater peer reviewer to that fact, and she has signed off on the stormwater management in place. And in the decision, I conditioned that although the erosion control plan has been approved by her, that I have the discretion to add more if necessary, when I visit the site, and I'll visit it with the conservation administrator as well. Although there is concern, it is a steep slope. I've pointed that out since day one in this application. I think they've put the measures in place to account for a job. I think they've put the measures in place to account for it, John.
Okay, great. I I take, I think the fact that if you go out early and notice a problem, that's better than to wait till the end. My other question is sort of similar. Okay, they put the stockade face fence in place. Do you feel that there's that sufficient buffering to the residential area? I I forget whether there was going to be any lighting in the back of the property, but I want to make sure that what we end up with is a satisfactory buffer to the houses that are relatively close.
So zoning accounts for, because they bought a residential district, there needs to be a 50-foot dense buffer. And so the wooded buffer will remain in place. The fence line goes at the edge of that 50-foot buffer. So I think I think they comply with zoning, and we've taken the measures to ensure what can be done. And the rooftop mechanicals are what struck me over the weekend, to be honest. So I've been asking the, I'm sure there aren't any rooftop mechanicals.
Yeah, I'm glad you caught that. I hadn't thought of that. But that's relevant there if the houses are above above that point.
They're they're approximately similar elevation to the houses. So I think that's really important to make sure that there's not rooftop mechanicals. And the six-foot stockade fence, I mean, I don't know how much it will do, given there's a 50-foot buffer of tree line from from the tree line to the property line of the houses as well. So I think it's 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 in the same plane as the abutting industrial district. So.
Yeah. I my only other comment, and this is really more a question than a decision, because I'm not sure you did put anything in it. But I, one of the things that we've done in a number of recent decisions is we've asked the applicant to come back like a year later with kind of a summary of how the site is working out. I I feel like that's probably a precaution in this case. I I don't think it's as kind of as intense a possibility as on some of the other projects where we've seen where we're more concerned with parking and how parking works. But what would be good is to see, you know, maybe check in a year after it's done and, you know, do one quick review to make sure that there's no neighbor issues like related to lighting or anything else like that.
Okay, so I do not have that in the current decision. There's also, there's several conditions related to lighting to make sure it does not project off property, but I can add that condition as a special condition.
Yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for those comments, John. As I recall, and this is Aetan, as I recall, there was one light in the back and it basically and down instead of not like a spotlight.
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else have any? Gene, go ahead.
Yep. So that being said, I did, based on the testimony before the board, include some provisions for the draft decision. So I have truck deliveries shall be limited to regular business hours eight to five. And truck deliveries, I mean, if they're getting any type of gravel or lumber or deliveries of product they use in their business. And then hours of operation came up several times. And so I have Sunday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. They indicated that their people arrive and trucks start up at about 6:00 a.m. So again, that's for you to decide. But I have 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday, in your decision. And I conditioned the six-foot privacy fence, but they've since added it. So that that can come out of the decision. And the new plan date would be effective 9/15 rather than what's specified in your decision.
Yep. Okay. If there are no more questions or comments, then why don't we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a second. All right, let's vote. John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aetan, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
Who was the second? Was the second Kate?
Yes, it was me.
Thank you.
Kate.
Okay, let's review the draft decision. So we're going to include John's suggestion of a review one year out, but just a report for the planning board. We have the hours of operation. Anyone, six, in the draft decision, is 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.? Anybody want to change that or any comments on that?
This is Kelly, just a comment, I believe, in one of the last discussions. It was said those early morning hours would be kind of reduced noise. There wouldn't be the loud vehicles, the backup noises, just kind of in deference to the neighbors, but still allowing obvious operation. Is there a way to amend or at least kind of add to those hours to talk about kind of that reduced noise at the 6:00 a.m. hour?
Yeah. If I remember, in one of our other decisions, Gina said there was a a line that said the truck shouldn't, you know, idle for long periods of time. And I think we did that, too. Family on to, they shouldn't have long, long period of time or their truck should be within five minutes or any unnecessarily unnecessary noise, you know, in the morning. But I know that's not specific.
Hi, this is Aaron. Do we have anything documented regarding the the rooftop or lack thereof of rooftop HVAC equipment that Gene had caught?
No, so I just caught this this weekend. So I had already drafted the decision. But if you want to add that to a finding of fact that, or or a special condition that any rooftop mechanical equipment must come back to the planning board?
Well, we could just.
I think it'd be wise.
Okay, so we can just put in that there will not, there should not be any rooftop mechanical equipment, and you can always come back for, a modification or an incentive change if they want to. So let's add that. Kelly, on your comment, are you, any specific time period, like?
Is it seven?
Or just want to just put?
I mean, I think like the six to seven hour, right, would be sort of that reduced noise, you know, thinking about the construction beep 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 of the large trucks moving back and forth, which can be disruptive in a neighborhood. And that seemed to align with what was discussed there, that that would attempt to be minimized with the positioning of the trucks when they went in. I don't know the technical term of the beep beep beep.
In that, in that number 12, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. business and vehicle noise, including idling, shall be kept to a minimum.
I would think so. That seems appropriate.
I mean, I don't want to be too specific or draconian, because I mean, they need to get up and running. But I think the intent is just to let's keep it quiet. And then it's if we do have complaints, anything, go back and address it further.
I think that's fair.
All right, can we get a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Thank you very much.
All right, Aetan, I just want to confirm. Peter was the motion and John Simon's the second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Guys, thank you so much. I look forward to working with you guys.
All right, good luck.
Enjoy your evening.
Okay, we're going to do another reading of our public hearing language. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Chapter Thirty A, Section Eighteen, the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North End of the Planning Board, I'm sorry, this hearing, of the hearing of the North End of the Planning Board related to 335 Willow Street will be held by remote participation. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and their parties with the right and the requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at northendoverma.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on the television by turning to Comcast Channel Eight or Verizon Channel Twenty-Six or online at www.northendover or no in-person attendance and members of the public, members of the board or the applicant will be permitted, but every effort will be made for the applicant to access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town and the end of the website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as after the meeting. If any member of the public would like to participate in public hearing in this public hearing, email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to Jean Enright, our planning director, j e n r i g h t at northendoverma.com. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, 335 Willow Street, nothing, three X LLC, care of Michael Ogan, applicant for site plan review special under Article Eight, Part Three, Article Ten, One Ninety-Five, Ten Point Seven of the North End of the zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of two building additions to 8,708 square feet with associated parking, landscaping, utilities and stormwater management design. The primary use proposed is manufacturing and warehouse. The property is located in the I-1 zoning district. All right, Gene, want to get us up to date on 335 Willow Street?
This hearing was opened with no evidence heard at the last meeting. Bacon Joy currently is located at 351 Willow Street. They recently purchased 335 Willow Street and intend to expand their operations to this location. As a reminder for the board members that were here at the time and for information for the new members, on February 17, 2015, the site was granted approval for a site plan review special permit to allow for construction. And this is 351 Willow Street, so the home base of Bacon Joy. So they added 11,168 square foot addition to their building, construction of a new parking area and construction of new stormwater management system, partial removal of an existing berm at the rear of the building and to allow for a 35% reduction in the required parking spaces for the facility. This permit is still under construction and has not been closed out. The reason I bring that up is you have a couple of, well, you have a town department comment from the police department and a butter comment related to on-street parking. So the 351 Willow Street location does have some on-street parking in addition to the off-street parking that is pretty consistent daily. The a butter comment is a business located directly across the street from 335, and his concerns were related to safety of his work is coming and going, given the tractor trailer traffic that exists on the roadway. Department Review has commented from Conservation, DPW, Police and Fire. An NOI has been submitted to the Conservation Commission. And Horsley Witten has submitted their first round of peer review comments. I have a couple of emails I've received since 6 o'clock tonight. So the applicants may be able to update you more on the review process with both department and stormwater, but I have not reviewed those emails.
Okay, this is Aetan. I'm going to read the public comment that we received. It is from Tom Bianchi. Says, Hi, Gene, thank you for rapid response to my inquiry. I did review the documents and now understand the work to be done at 335 Willow Street. Working across the street from Bacon Joy and Jensen for 30 years, my only concern is similar to what the NAPD expressed, which was parking. With the amount of trucks moving in and out of Bacon Joy and the increased street parking over the years, it can be a time somewhat hazardous to our employees entering and exiting our facility as well as when they take walks at break time. Thank you for understanding my concern. Tom Bianchi, Vice President, East Print, Inc. Thank you, Tom, for your comment. Appreciate that. And I know there was a North End over Police Department comment which was similar, was from Lieutenant Lannan, who said the concerns on the police department and would be noise emissions and parking. Says having lived in the area in the past, they have had early pickups with an individual using a steel mallet on a tanker truck to set up a product. This issue was addressed. I do believe they have overflow parking onto the street currently. I do not know how many more vehicles will be displaced with the addition of the building. If the street can handle the additional parking, we would have no issue. Okay, so why don't we hear from the applicant about where we are from their perspective with department review, with conservation, and then some specifics as to parking crews?
Good evening. For the record, John Moran from the Moran Cameron Group. We're here tonight representing Muffin Three X LLC for site plan review special permit for the property at 335 Willow Street South. Gene, I haven't been in front of you guys in a while. Am I able to share my screen or no?
The board members have access to all of your information. So if it was included in the packet, if you could just specify what you're looking at, they have a link to the agenda with all the same information.
All right, perfect. Really, I'll just go over the plan. So the proposed project involves the construction of two additions, one on the north side of the building and one on the southerly side of the building, totaling approximately 8,700 square feet. And that's what results in us coming for the planning board for site plan review. Before I get any further, I would like to address the comments regarding the parking over at 351 Bacon Joy, which is next door. So Gene is right, that project has not been closed out. That's getting finished up right now. Our surveyors were out about a month ago doing the final as-built. So hopefully, we should be submitting an as-built plan to the planning board and the Conservation Commission for certificate of compliance, probably within the next month, month and a half, once all the grass has grown back in. With regards to the parking, Bacon Joy purchased a portion of the cul-de-sac many years ago. So some of the parking looks like they might be parking in the street, but they're actually on their property. However, they are correct that some employees were still parking along the edge of the road. And looking at the aerials, recent aerials, 2019, 2018, 2017, since the additional parking areas were built, the cars that were out in the street could easily fit in the parking lot. It was more of a convenience and more of, you know, creatures of habit. People have been working there for more than 20 years. They've been parking out there. But they've been told, based on the last round of comments that we got, they've been instructed that they can no longer park in the street, so that'll be taken care of. Again, that's for 351. With regards to 335, the proposed use meets the parking criteria. And we actually didn't need to add any additional pavement. All we needed to do is re-stripe one section of the parking lot for 335 in order to get the required number of spaces required under the zoning bylaw. So 335 meets the required parking requirements for the proposed uses, again, which is manufacturing and warehouse. As a matter of fact, we're actually reducing the amount of impervious surface on the site based on some reconfigurations of the parking. We're able to remove approximately 350 square feet of pavement that's within the buffer zone, the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetland, and just replace it with landscaping. So again, the proposed project, about a third of the proposed addition is actually within existing driveway, but it doesn't interfere an existing parking lot, but it doesn't interfere with any of the parking that's provided. Because the proposed increase in impervious surface is roof, it doesn't require any additional treatment before infiltration. So we're proposing a underground infiltration system in the front of the building. So we're proposing a underground infiltration system in the front of the building. And the remainder of the overflow flows across the parking lot as it currently does and. We are proposing to fix, there's a riprap spillway at a low spot on the southerly side. Of the parking lot where runoff leaves and heads toward the wetland. That's an old riprap spillway, it's shown on the record plans. To back up a bit, this building was built back in 1985, an addition was added to the west side back in 1991. At the time permits were pulled, a permit was issued from the Conservation Commission, a certificate of compliance was issued. And. Now we're here before you with these other proposed additions. We have had a discussion with Horstley Witten regarding their review. No major issues in their review letter, we have prepared a response and revised plans which have been submitted today. So obviously, we're not going to be asking for you to close the hearing because you haven't had a chance to review that information. With regards to town department comments. The biggest comment was from the. Police Department with regards to the parking and again, the 335 address meets the zoning criteria. For the required parking spaces, we do not anticipate needing any more spaces than what's required by zoning. And with regards to 351, as I had stated, Bacon Joy will make sure that nobody's parking out in the right of way moving forward. Other town department comments were pretty standard comments. We've also submitted responses to those comments, nothing changed the design with regards to those comments. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
I will take each person in turn. John, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, John, could you tell us what the proposed use of the new space is? It wasn't clear to me. Is there office, manufacturing? What's it for?
It's manufacturing and warehouse. You know, Bacon Joy produces mixes, bases, frozen batters, coffee cakes and more. I can actually let Michael Ogan elaborate a little bit more, but it's warehouse and manufacturing is the proposed use.
Yeah, if you could just paint the picture a little bit more, that'd be a big help.
And this is just to add on at this daytime. On. Number, new kind of employee trucks or what's with this new use or added use or whatever is going on. What's going to change in terms of the number of people on-site for any period of time?
Michael, you there?
Hi. Hi, this is Mike Ogan. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure if that was going to work, so thank you again for hearing us tonight, we appreciate it. So to answer the question, yeah, the use of the building is going to be primarily manufacturing, so it's taking. A portion of our manufacturing out of our 351 location. That's our commercial bakery and moving it into a larger space in this new facility. So there's, it's about four times larger than the space that we're currently using to manufacture one, one portion of our bakery. And. The question about people, it's actually. It's probably a net, it's probably about the exact same, potentially a small net reduction, but most likely the same number of people. They'd just be moving from 351 over to 335. And in the drawing, you can't see, so it's primarily manufacturing, but there is warehousing for finished goods. So some freezer space as well as raw materials, some dry warehouse. And then there is a small office area or cafeteria, locker rooms, a couple offices for meetings and a conference room.
Michael, can I follow up with that with, do you have any intention to have an outdoor reefer equipment or rooftop mechanical equipment?
So there will be refrigerated trucks that are moving products out of the building and, and some materials into the building, yes. And there will be, another question was rooftop, there are some rooftop mechanical equipment on top of the proposed addition. But a lot of the, a lot of the equipment because of the structure will be on the ground.
And just to elaborate on that, Jean, the rooftop equipment is going to be out towards the front of the building out by Willow Street. Not that. The residential properties exist on the westley side of Route 125. So we have about a. Hold on one second. From the rear of the building to the edge of where the vegetation stops, it's approximately 140 feet. The building itself is about 102 feet off the rear lot line. And like I said, the rooftop equipment is going to be mounted out towards the front of the building towards Willow Street, which is. An additional almost 400 feet down the building.
Yeah, I do know that the last time you were in, and gosh, it was, it was a while back, there were a fair number of butters who lived in a property in Andover. That raised comments, you must have done something right because I haven't heard any. Comments and concerns about that, but could you talk a little bit about that, just what steps, if any, you can or will take to mitigate the impact on those neighbors?
John, may I say something?
Sure.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Ogan. I am the president and CEO of Bacon Joy and have been approaching the, this, this board and others since. A 1985 in your town. And that's, John, that's a very good question, and I would say the answer to that. And it gets. The answer to that is Karen, because we are a family business and we operate the business. Just as if we were working with our customers nearby, so I personally. Went out to Kathleen Drive about two weeks after we were in our building back in 1987. And met with the butters who had personally called me on my telephone. So if we were to spend some time discussing. What we have done, it is meeting with the neighbors, hearing their concerns. We've worked with the Board of Health, we have an environmental engineer on, on our staff who has worked with. With the neighbors with, with any concerns that they have. We did it back in the 87, back in 1987 and. If there are any concerns, just as our neighbor East Print, we, we talked to our associates. And we collectively work together as a team to resolve any, any issues. And if, the other thing I just wanted to say is several years back, we bought 160 Flagship. So that the packaging and the raw materials. Coming into our facility, both at 351 and at 335, will be coming for the most part from 160 Flagship. Via our own trucks and most of those are brought in during the daytime. The other thing that has changed, so there aren't trucks coming and going from exterior vendors like there were years ago. The major change not only being 160, but we opened up a distribution facility several years back in air mass. So we no longer quotation distribute out of the 351 facility. And we will not and don't intend to distribute products out of the, out of the 335 facility. Those products would go to our distribution facility. Either in air mass or in a separate facility up in, in New Hampshire, so the traffic concern. Given the size of the company today versus back in 1987, has been taken care of by the acquisition of, of these facilities. And as you can see, we're very happy to be in North Andover as, as we have grown. Proud to say this will be our third facility on Willow Street and Flagship area, so. So I want to thank the board in advance for working with us and it's, it really has been a great relationship through these years and we truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Great.
Aaron, any questions or comments?
I think the plans are pretty clear, but just for the record, just wanted to verify if there are any changes to site lighting proposed.
Yeah, the, we submitted a lighting plan, there's no additional light poles, we're just remounting lights. We're reducing the light emissions slightly from what currently exists. So pretty much everything's staying status quo, we are replacing the lights, but again, we're not changing the existing poles that are out there. We're just using the existing poles, no new poles are proposed.
That's all I had at the moment, thank you.
John, can you inform the board where you stand with the Conservation Commission?
You repeat that, Jean?
John, can you inform the board where you stand with the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, so the first meeting with the commission, they didn't want to hear the project because we hadn't heard back from Horstley Witten yet. At the last conservation meeting, which was last week, they allowed us to present. Because of the fact that we've already heard back from Horstley Witten at the time, Conservation Commission did not have any major comments. They were pretty much waiting for a blessing from Horstley Witten before they approved the project, but. As I had mentioned, based on the meeting we had last week, they didn't seem to have any comments or concerns.
John, if you may, I have a comment related to, again, 351 Willow Street, not necessarily 335. So I know Mr. Ogan spoke to the relationship that Bacon Joy has had with North Andover and it has been. By far a positive relationship, no doubt. However, he did mention the Kathleen Drive, which is a. Street in Andover is actually the closest of butters and historically, somebody from Kathleen Drive has participated in these meetings. I've not received any comments to date for this application. However, our health director has been investigating a noise complaint recently. He has been, he has communicated that Bacon Joy has been nothing but supportive. They're trying to isolate where the noise may be coming from. He thinks it has some legitimacy, but they are taking readings from Kathleen Drive and try to isolate. If possibly it is a rooftop unit or whatnot that is causing the noise, but Bacon Joy has been very supportive of their efforts and. Also trying to isolate the noise in order to address it.
Great, thank you, that's, that's helpful. Peter, any questions or comments? No. Kate, any questions or comments?
I'll set, thanks.
Kelly, any questions or comments?
No.
I don't have anything else at this time. Jean, what's our next step?
So as I said, I received a couple of emails either just before six or after related to stormwater, I'm sure. So we need to close up the stormwater report. I think department review has been addressed and I would like to resolve that noise issue prior to closing the hearing, so I will check back in with the health department.
Okay, so want to continue this until October 6 and we'll see if we get, we get all the answers we need and we can make a decision. And we'll be with them on October 6.
Okay.
Okay, so hearing continued until October 6, 2020. Great, thank you. Muffin 3X and 335 Willow Street.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go to discussion items, we're going to come back and do the new public hearings as good as well as their A and R. Let's say those, we'll get those in at the end altogether. Discussion items for High Street Avalon Bay Community, David Gillespie. Request for substantial change to approved motive for decisions of this day, definitive master plan special permit. dated February 20, 2020. Applicant proposes a reduction in onsite parking spaces. May apply with zoning by requirements, production and pavement and reduction in the annual.
Hello, I see you all again, Dave Gillespie from Avalon Bay. I'm going to quickly turn it over to Phil Henry from, to talk through the civil engineering. Changes, but really there's only two things to review tonight. One is. What we're watching, Bill and I worked on together to make a lot more efficient and more in keeping with the 170 units that we had permitted finally at the end of our. Prior process. Elevation changes, color mostly. In response to Machine Shop Village, which Ed Bradford will go through, so with that, I'll turn it over to Phil to. Make any comments or answer any questions related to the parking lot changes.
Can I, Phil, before you start, can I just say one thing? So this is A-10, as I remember and as I reviewed with Jean, when we got our last plans, it was actually for the 200 units. Rather than the 175, is that right? And then, so these are adjustments based on the actual, what was actually approved, correct?
That, that's correct. We went from 200 to 170, it was a late change and we never changed the parking lot design when we went from 200 to 170. And this is just catching the civil engineering plans up to the architectural plans that were approved.
Okay, great. Okay, Phil, thank you.
Good evening, for the record, I am Phil Henry with Civil Design Group, so as Dave had indicated. We basically caught the, caught up the civil plans relative to the number of the approved units because the approved plan. Which was 170, the, the parking space. The parking lot provided was still able to accommodate for the, the original amount of units. So as such, when we took a fresh look at this, Avalon wanted to reduce that parking down, so we more or less lost 49 parking spaces. And if, if everybody has the, if you guys can open up the, the, the overall site layout that has the green. Transparent highlighted areas, Jean, was that part of the circulation to the members?
Yes.
Excellent. So tho- those two green areas highlight most notably the, the changes, so the, the first part of the plan. Focuses more on the, on the south or southwest side that, that faces Sutton Pond. We really wanted to target removing the parking spaces along that property line and we think we've achieved that. And in lieu of those parking spaces, which was bounded by seven or eight foot retaining wall, we were able to. You know, re-shift and remove a majority of those parking spaces there, which allowed us to. Open up more of a, of a green vegetated slope as opposed to a seven or eight foot wall that was, that was right at that property line. So we think that was, that was a win-win for everybody involved, including the butters, as opposed to looking at a retaining wall, now they're going to be looking at a vegetated slope. The, the second area that we focused on was the, I'll call it the main entrance to Avalon, not the. Parking lot along, along High Street, but that's, that's second entrance, if you will, as you're coming in off of High Street. We, we've adjusted that access drive. We switched the sidewalk from the building A side to, to, I guess would be the, the east side. Just to create more vegetation along the building and, and not to introduce any more pedestrian traffic along, along, along that building. And then most notably, we, we've introduced a, a circular access. Or I should say a radial access in front of building A that ties into that main access drive as opposed to having two T intersections. Per the approved plan, we were able, because we were able to lose some spaces, create a better site circulation for that property and this site. This layout has been reviewed by the fire department and I certainly don't want to speak for them, but the feedback that I got is that they, they've deemed this layout satisfactory. This site has also. This site has also went under peer review by Horsey Witten. And we, we recently received a, what I would consider a clean letter just before business hours or close of, of, of five o'clock today. We, we received a favorable letter. So, so as you would imagine, with the loss of the parking spaces came a reduction of impervious coverage, which, which we think is an advantage as well. So those are the, those are the high level changes. I'm happy to get into anything more specific, but it's, it was really from a horizontal perspective, it's as simple as that. It's just targeting loss of spaces, which created more landscape, which also allowed for the reduction of retaining wall, about 150 feet in total.
Okay, so, so is the number of spaces reduced? Is that the corresponding number, percentage wise from 170 to 200, like that's going down? You know, like?
Yeah, the ratio, yeah, the ratios. Yeah, the, at 200 units, we were at a 1.7 ratio. At 170, it maintains a 1.7 ratio.
Okay, great, alright. Jean, do you have opinions as to whether these changes are insubstantial?
So I have confirmed with the building commissioner that the parking, as it stands, although it, I believe a 10% reduction of parking, 48 spaces, what I have, it's still compliant with zoning. So the building commissioner has confirmed that, and the fire department has confirmed that the swap path analysis is still sufficient for their fire apparatus. This project is also before the Conservation Commission. They've handled it as a minor modification as well. And so given it's an insubstantial change request with this board, it did not require notification. The Conservation Commission will not require notification either, given that they're handling it as a minor modification.
And the change in the wall, that's, that's by the driveway, not, not the wall, any fencing or anything like that on the neighborhood, right?
Yeah, the, the, the reduction of the length of wall was primarily along the southerly end along Sutton Pond. So there's, there is no other reduction of wall elsewhere.
Aton, I would just add that, I'm sorry. Aton, I will add that we did receive a response from Horsey Witten, our stormwater peer reviewer, late today. And I agree that they've signed off that everything is minor modification and accounted for. However, I would say that there probably needs to be a little bit of clarification, just for the record, in terms of the, the existing impervious area and the proposed impervious area. So different reports and, and plans state different numbers. And so Phil, I would just ask you to clarify in terms of proposed impervious versus existing impervious, just for the record. But other than that, the design itself has been approved by Horsey Witten.
Yeah, so I, the, there, so there's, there's, there's three sets of numbers, right? There's the existing impervious, and there's the improved impervious, and then there's the proposed impervious, which is before you. So the, the proposed impervious is, is slightly less than, than the proposed, than the approved impervious by means of the reduction of the parking spaces. And we've noted that in the end, as a submitted plan, it's more or less point, point one or point one five acres. So that's, that's our, that's how we calculated the, the impervious coverage. But I think the, the overarching theme is that it's a reduction of, of the approved, of the approved plan. And, and we all, we all realize and recognize that it, it's an increase over the existing condition.
Okay, we'll take any questions or comments. John?
No, I'm okay.
Aaron?
I have nothing.
Peter?
Nothing.
Kate?
I just have one more comment to add.
Just a quick question.
I'm sorry. I keep hearing Jean when you say Kate, but I just have one more comment to add in terms of the parking. This, this, I believe, 296 parking spaces proposed, which is compliant with zoning. Just again, for the board's memory, that 103 of those spaces are shared spaces. So I believe lot two of the original subdivision plan, those spaces are shared with, shared with RCG's operations. And again, that is the intent of this bylaw in this area is to share spaces whenever applicable. So again, for the record, they comply with zoning, however, 103 of those spaces are shared spaces.
Okay, I will call on Kate again and only Kate.
Jean answered my question. Thank you.
Wow, serendipity. Kelly?
No questions.
All right, can we get a motion to approve insubstantial change for four High Street Avalon Bay community?
So moved.
Right, moved by John and I believe seconded by Aaron.
Aton, given it's a second, can I make one more comment? So I believe the original approval, Kate, you had, you had voted not in favor, right? So you're still eligible to vote on this? I just want to clarify that.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and the vote is, and really the vote is whether or not this is an insubstantial change.
Right.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aton, I vote yes, this is an insubstantial change. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Approved as an insubstantial change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, can I ask, where, where do you guys stand in the process now? I know you're going to, when things will be built and such.
We are working on plans. It's when we have worked through all these details that we're presenting to you tonight. We probably have a few more months of that, and I would expect it would be starting some part in the beginning of next year. Somewhere between late winter, early spring next year.
Okay, great. All right, well, you know where to find us if, if anything else comes up.
Thank you very much. Rivin cutting.
All right.
Thank you.
Trinity Financial discussion items, Trinity Financial, Jim Keefe, proposed master plan redevelopment of Royal Crest Estates.
Aton, before that, I just missed the second on that insubstantial change. Can you repeat the second?
It was Aaron.
Aaron, thank you.
All set?
All set.
My name is, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Keefe, and I am a principal at Trinity Financial in Boston. We are a Boston-based real estate development company. About three years ago, we were retained by Aimco, the owners of Royal Crest Estates, to take a hard look at, at this, this property. I think it's no surprise to anybody in North Andover that Royal Crest Estates needs a lot of attention. We, we considered two things. One is a major renovation of the existing site. To take a hard look at that and see what that amounted to. And, and, and also in the alternative, to start all over again on the 77 acre site and, and pursue a master plan. The first part of this exercise of innovation was pretty straightforward. We brought in engineers to consider all of the systems, the structure, all the civil work. And it's a 50-year-old property. It's tired. It needs, it needs a lot of attention. ADA compliance, energy conservation codes, life safety issues, the basic shell and core of the buildings themselves. There's just a myriad of things going on there that become very, very complex and cost prohibitive. It's got aluminum wiring, for example. Rewiring the place is going to require an extensive amount of poking holes in, in what we know to be asbestos materials throughout all the buildings. They're, they're enclosed, but once you start penetrating walls and ceilings and wherever you have to, to get all this done, it requires safety protocols and, and other steps that dramatically increase the cost and slow the process down. So we determined that renovation was not feasible. The other thing about a renovation was, is, is going to be significantly disruptive to the existing residents. That, that's, you can't have residents in buildings undergoing this kind of renovation. The other thing was, is that a renovation would not allow us to accommodate Merrimack College, with whom we have been having conversations with for three years. We are very excited about a possible role for them in this development. And we are very, very impressed with the leadership there and want very much to be a part of their, their growth in the years ahead. I'm joined tonight with a number of people. We have John Martin, who is at Elkisum and Freddie, and John has led the master planning exercise. We have Peter Chan, who is our land use attorney from Goulston Stores. We also have my colleague, Mike Lozano, who was vice president development at Trinity. And Mike will be leading the, this whole process as, as the project manager. We're also pleased to have two folks coming in from Aimco via cable television. We have James Wang from, from Aimco in New York City, and he's on the development side. And we also have Patty Schrader, and she's tuning in from Denver. And she does a lot of the, a lot of the permitting and public engagement for Aimco. You know, in these COVID times, it's really hard to convey our enthusiasm and excitement about this project. But we're going to do the best we can. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, who will walk you through the, the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, playing board. Jean, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I should share my screen or if I should just go through the presentation quickly, just describing where I am and people can flip through.
So it's, since we're mostly actually just being audio to the general public, sharing your screen is not really particularly helpful. So if you could point out what we're going through. I think for us, at this kind of getting stage, one of the things I'd like to hear about, we'd like to hear about the project in general, but really what the role that you see for this board is, what are we doing here? What are you looking for us to do here? What are the concerns that we're going to have from a planning perspective? And how are we going to address those? Because I'd like to, you know, there, there are going to be some things that we probably think are great. There are going to be some things that we probably think are concerning and need to be addressed. And it's best if we get them all out upfront and start tackling them head on.
Yes, well, thank you for that, and, and we certainly appreciate that. And I think we've, you know, I'll go through the presentation. I think that we've, you know, we've, we've thought of some things. Obviously, we haven't thought of everything, and we want to hear your comments and your questions. This is obviously the beginning, as you mentioned, is the beginning of a process. So, so I'll, I'll just get to it, and then we can, we can continue to have the discussion. So starting on the first page, you know, just to reiterate what Jim said.
Hold on, the first page of what?
No, it's the first page of the, the presentation. It's a, it's a PowerPoint presentation that you guys have. So it's.
Station 7920, okay.
Thank you very much. So on the, on the, on the vision statement page, which is the page right after the title page, you know, really what, this just sort of sets out our goals, which, which Jim sort of summarized. But, you know, really, the current Royal Crest, it's 50 years old. It's tired, and it's really at the end of its useful life. It really must be replaced. Currently, there's 588 units of multifamily housing on the site. It's all residential. We heard that there's a desire for mixed use, not all residential. So that's something that we really looked to accommodate and something that I'll get into. We've included some retail, some very nice, high-end retail spaces, some hospitality spaces, a hotel, some office spaces, along with a different and a range of residential spaces, which I'll get into. As we preserve it, as, as we look at it now, preserves open space and provides new recreational opportunities, which I'll get into. And as Jim mentioned, you know, Merrimack College is one of the fastest-growing colleges in America, and the new Royal Crest will really help to serve their needs, and we'll get into that a little bit more. So moving on to the next page, which is titled "Existing Conditions."
Point where you start, because I think you, when you talked about the number of units that exist today, I think you counted the number of bedrooms, not the number of units. So you're inflating the number from what it really is. So can you clarify that, please?
So there's, so I mentioned that there was 588 units that exist there today, and that is the number of units, not the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
So.
How many structures today?
There's over 50. There's approximately 55 structures. So if you go to the next page, and I'm sure many of you are familiar to an extent, but just to do a summary of sort of the existing conditions. You know, again, there's over 50 existing buildings spread all across the site. Really a 1970s style of plan of garden-style apartments. There's really no there, there, no sense of place. There's poor vehicular and pedestrian circulation. There's lots of impermeable paving, very poor drainage. Right now, there's over 1,100 cars that park today. And, you know, it's something that we really looked at, you know, how do we, how do we change this situation and make it something that people could really be proud of? Moving on to the next page, again, continuing with the existing conditions. These are just some, some photographs of the existing site. You know, it's, it's wooded, and it's not too bad. But the buildings themselves, as we've been talking about, are, you know, in very difficult condition as far as, you know, continuing on as high-quality housing. The units are smaller. There's a lot of issues, as Jim mentioned, with asbestos and ADA requirements. And, you know, bringing them up to a current standard is just incredibly difficult to do. But at the same time, we really wanted to, you know, preserve the good parts of it, which is this natural greenery, sort of a buffer from this site to the surrounding neighborhoods, and really kind of preserve some primary green spaces within our new proposal, which I'll get into. So the next page is the proposed master plan. So I will go through and, and sort of talk about the different elements here and kind of introduce this to you guys. So we, we, we really organized this around two primary elements. What the, the, what we're calling a Newtown Green, which is directly across the street of Route 114 from Merrimack College, it's labeled A on this, is a, is a new public green space that organizes sort of the whole entry into the site as we see it now. And beyond that, around the entire perimeter of the site, we looked to create and maintain a very significant wooded buffer from our site to the property line, and in turn, really buffering it from the surrounding neighborhoods. So there's over 100-foot buffer from, and in some cases, it's more like 130 feet from the property line to structure. In, most of the perimeter has, has some wetland areas, and we're preserving all of those wetland areas around the, the perimeter, which again, serves to act as a buffer. So we're really looking to maintain those mature trees and that buffer space around the entire perimeter of the site and focus, you know, the more intensive uses towards Merrimack College and towards 114. In the, the purple building, sort of labeled B on, on your plan, is what we're proposing to be a new hotel, so a boutique hotel of 102 keys or rooms. In the dark blue buildings, again, right across the street from Merrimack, is what we are envisioning as a new student village, purpose-built student housing for Merrimack students. Currently, there's a very large number of Merrimack students living at Royal Crest, either with units that the university rents directly. either with units that the university rents directly from Aimco or that some students rent individually. So this element, this new student village, would be controlled by Merrimack. They would have, you know, resident advisors who would be there 24 hours a day, who would, you know, maintain a lot more order with the student population than than exists now. In the orange buildings, the darker orange buildings along Route 114, these are proposed as mixed-income housing with an affordable element, which we can get into later. We are proposing that that be 385 multifamily units. The other tan and orange buildings would be market-rate multifamily housing. That would replace the existing 588. We are proposing 608 units in those buildings. In element H, the purple building to the south, that is proposed to be 124,000-square-foot office building, which is something that we heard, again, we wanted a mix of uses here, broaden the tax base. But at the same time, we see that there is a demand for some Class A office space in North Andover, and it's something that we're excited to propose. In building C1, right in the middle of the site, this is envisioned to be age-restricted, sort of active-living, active-adult housing of 135 units. And then lastly, the yellow buildings more towards the rear of the site are proposed to be 259 townhouse-style units, which would largely be for sale. So again, we're looking to provide a mix of uses in this proposed plan. And and in the residential element, provide a mix of the types of housing that we're proposing. So the next page, I'm going to turn it over to John Martin, who is our architect and our master planner, and just give a little bit of some of the background about what we're looking to propose as it relates to the architecture and, you know, sort of the the urban planning that we're looking at here.
And before you turn it over, Michael, what's the total number of units that you've just
The total number of units is 1,387.
Does that include
No, that does not include the hotel rooms. So of the
And it doesn't It doesn't include the dormitories either.
That's correct, which we are proposing to be 1,000 beds.
So there's this is a, there are a couple, we can talk about those things. We definitely want to. There's some charts as to the to these numbers in subsequent documents. So why don't we talk about those numbers? If we want to get into those, why don't we look at those charts and we do that? Because I have some questions about that, too. But why don't we get through the overview, and then we can talk about those specific numbers, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you, Michael. Good evening, everyone. If you're on the next page of the handout, you see four precedent images for what we envision this town square to be like. As Michael has mentioned, it's over two acres of open space, surrounded by three- to five-story buildings to form a street wall on three of the four sides. We intended to be a very active space with some of it hardscaped with outdoor seating spilling out from restaurants and retail stores, and the majority of it being an open lawn framed by a grove of trees, preserving some existing pines up against 114. If you go to the next page, there's a ground-level rendering of what we have as a working title deemed Main Street, with a pavilion in the park on the right and the retail at the base of the hotel on the left, with some tivoli lights spanning the street. And you've noticed a change in the paving. We we want to make, we want to calm the street, make it a very low-speed street and make it a very pedestrian-oriented space, both during the day and especially in the evenings as it opens up onto the park. As Michael has already pointed out, it's activated by hotel use, which is a transient use, by multifamily housing along its east edge, and by student housing along its west edge. So we get a good variety of different uses and different populations that will be using these spaces at different times. And the whole thing, even at the base of the student residential, is envisioned as having retail space. So the park is activated late into the evening. And then the third slide is in more of an aerial view.
Ask a question on the first slide, which I think is slide second, six in your deck. I'm looking and counting the number of floors and, you know, where it looks out on the plaza. And I count one building with at least six floors. Is am I getting that wrong?
It's it's five over one. So yes, a total of six at the tallest building.
Is there, can you guess if you're any other commercial-type building in North Andover that's six stories tall?
I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, the answer is no. So you're introducing an element of height that doesn't exist anywhere else in town.
That's that, if that's true, that would be correct. And the height is generally masked. First of all, that's the tallest piece. There's not no building taller than that, than that one piece. And the the height is masked up against 114, and it fronts onto a two-acre park. So in our estimation, it's a it's a very appropriate scale for that. And if you look back at the precedent images, you see similarly four, five, and six-story buildings surrounding these green spaces, all of which are a little bit smaller than ours. But as we go through the process, obviously, that's something that we will be negotiating and discussing.
John, if I could ask for clarification. When you mentioned the precedent images, and the precedent images having five, six stories, it it looks to me like in those images, it's in a community that has buildings substantially higher than five and six stories. So I just want to be careful how we compare, you know, the what might appropriate scale in those precedent images. And when you talk about appropriate scale here, you know, I think in relation to the ground is is probably not unimportant.
No, that's a very good point. And I think that over the course of this planning and permitting exercise, we'll show you elevations that put it in context with the heights of the buildings across the street in Merrimack College, put it in the context of the heights up and down 114, and in heights, in contrast to the heights maybe elsewhere in North Andover. So you get a you will have a real good sense of exactly what we're proposing. And to your point about the precedent images, the top two, the one on the left, is from Los Angeles, California, which certainly has taller buildings. The one on the right is San Jose at Santana Row. And the two bottom ones are in Stores, Connecticut, at the University of Connecticut, which does have lower-scale buildings. That's a a point well made.
I that actually answers one of my questions, that this is not meant to be a representation of this specific site, but it's it's the look and feel that you're trying to go for.
Yes, exactly. And the final image that I'm going to talk to is this aerial perspective, which shows the kiosk that anchors the northwest corner of the park on the left, the two acres of open green space in the middle, and framed by the hotel on the left and the multifamily housing on the right. You're in a drone kind of hovering above the student housing to take this illustration. But it it reinforces the points that we're trying to make, that these four, five, six-story buildings, in one case, on the east facade, frame this open space, and the retail at the base activates it. There is some retail in the park. There is an outdoor dining component in the park. Over the last six months, we realized the importance and the value of outdoor active dining space and recreation space, and how important open space will be to this development, not only in this town square, but as Michael mentioned, in that whole green perimeter, that green buffer. There's actually a whole lot of open space in this project. So with that, I'll pause for any questions or turn it back over to Michael.
So I'll just, you know, I'll quickly continue through the presentation. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of questions. And, you know, one thing I just want to reiterate is that, you know, it's a very large site. It's over 76 acres here. And, you know, we are proposing what looks to be a large development. But it is, you know, again, it's a large site, and it is something that's not going to be built all at once. This is a very long-term plan and something that's envisioned to be built over many different phases, over eight to 10 years. So we can get into that discussion a little bit as well. But right now, I'm on the the page that's called Preservation of Open Space and Wetlands. So again, this is just to sort of reiterate that we, you know, took open space very seriously and, again, preserved this green buffer around the perimeter of the site. And in fact, there's a number of buildings right now that are much closer, as they exist today, to the property line than we are proposing here. So we're trying to bring the the buildings away from the property line a little bit. And again, sort of focus the the more intensive uses, the taller buildings, towards 114 and Merrimack, and begin to step down in scale and context as you go back towards the the edges of the site to be more like a single-family house type of typology. At the same time, you know, we'll have lots of open space elements within the plan that people can interact with, both people who live here or work here or visitors. And again, we'll be preserving the vast majority of the wetlands on the site. There are three, I'll just highlight that there are three very small, isolated wetlands that we'll be looking to modify, but we'll be replicating those in the larger wetlands to the rear. And obviously, we'll be talking extensively with the Conservation Commission about that as we proceed. This is an image that we're really excited about, because it kind of gives you a flavor of how we envision these buffers to sort of work and how in sort of the perimeter of the site, you know, we we took how people that live around the site will will interact with it really seriously. And in fact, we've been talking to people who live in the neighborhoods, you know, so far, we've spoken to to multiple families who have seen this presentation. We wanted to get to, wanted to get their reactions, get get their comments early on so that we can integrate them into the plans and really take their 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 opinion on this development into account. And so far, those discussions have gone pretty well. We're going to continue to have those discussions. But this is an image that sort of shows, you know, the preservation of the existing wetlands, the preservation of the vast majority of the of the mature trees around the edge of the site, and the introduction of some new recreational elements as well. Again, these are sort of some inspirational or precedent images for open space, our green space. Again, wherever we can preserve mature trees, we're going to. We really want to have spaces that people can enjoy and interact with as they move throughout the site. I mentioned that there is and has a very, very
Yeah, page 11 of your presentation is just a picture, right? It's not meant to be a depiction of what the site will look like.
Page, I have it as page 10. This is the this is the sort of rendering with a jogger and a pond.
Right, okay, rendering of the site, but the next page is not, right?
Yes, yes, correct. So the four images, yes, I'm sorry, I'll be more descriptive as I go to, because because usually I'm sharing the screen on these. But but yes, the four images are meant, these are not the actual site, but these are sort of the inspirational, the types of park elements that we're going to be introducing. These are sort of like what we want it to look like, how we're designing it. We have a very good landscape architect, Kopley Wolf, who we've engaged, who is designing sort of the public spaces to be evocative of this. The next slide is, you know, four images of different sort of stormwater management elements. As I mentioned, the existing drainage is poor on the site, and there's been issues on this site for 50 years, essentially since it was built. And it's something that we've taken very seriously. Obviously, a lot of work needs to be done in order to to correct those drainage issues. But we have our engineering team who have come up with a design that will, you know, accommodate all of the the stormwater on site. It will improve the the infrastructure on our site so that we're not overburdening any of the surrounding infrastructure. And generally, you know, we should be improving all of the drainage issues in 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 the vicinity of our site. But at the same time, we want to, we want to introduce some sustainable, you know, elements. We need to manage the stormwater, so we might as well make them nice elements of our landscaping. So that's what we're looking to do with these different sort of stormwater management elements that you see here. Traffic, traffic is something that everybody is always concerned about. We are concerned about it as well. And in addition to that, pedestrian safety, bicycling safety is something we're very concerned about as well. There's been a tremendous amount of difficulty with pedestrians crossing Route 114 between the existing Royal Crest and Merrimack College. So it's something that we're very interested in in increasing the safety, while at the same time, you know, maintaining traffic flow and making sure that we're not overburdening the existing street system. So we've worked very closely with Mass DOT and with the town so far on the plans that are underway for Route 114. And our engineering team has been working hard to make sure that our proposal doesn't create, you know, unnecessary burden on Route 114 or elsewhere in the area. Their calculations so far show that there is only one impactful spot, which is right across from Merrimack College. And that would be our sort of primary ingress and egress. And we're working to mitigate for that. But elsewhere within the area, you know, we're showing very minimal to no impact. And we're, you know, we're very interested in wanting to maintain that. You know, one of the, one of the
Your traffic stuff, Michael, or the, but you do it sequentially because it's a 10-year build-out? Or would you do one as part of the master plan?
We're we're, we have started one as part of the master plan. So we'd like to look at the overall impact. We want to make, you know, everyone cares about it when it's all built out. So we, so we've been looking at it with that lens to make sure, once it is all built out, that the that the street system can can accommodate it. So the next image, the next
Oh, I just got a quick question. Again, related to your comments about impact on the roads. Just off the top of my head, am I in the right ballpark that the unit count here would be somewhere between a four- and five-fold increase in the number of cars?
We we don't see that there would be a four- or five-fold increase. There would be approximately a two-to 2.5-time increase. And so, and one of the reasons for that is that, you know, while we're increasing the number of residential units And so, and one of the reasons for that is that, you know, while we're increasing the number of residential units will actually be be reducing the number of larger family, multifamily residential units. So rather than two and three-bedroom units, the majority of our proposed units would be studio and one-bedroom units. So right now there's five hundred and eighty-eight units. They are all two and three-bedroom units, all of them. And right now there's, like I, like I mentioned before, there's already eleven hundred cars on the site.
So, so that's the reason that the increase would be closer to that two and a half times?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And we can obviously get into more detail on that. And, you know, we, as we engage our engineer, we can get you more specific figures, but that's, that's what we've got so far. So the next image that, you know, I'm, in our presentation really shows the, the, the change in how we perceive the streetscape on Route one fourteen. So Route one fourteen right now, it looks like a highway. I mean, it's not very pleasant, particularly if you're walking or biking along it. And, you know, as I mentioned, we're looking to focus our more intensive uses towards Merrimack and one, Route one fourteen. But at the same time, there's setback. Wherever we have the mature trees that exist, we're going to maintain them and create a nice wide buffered sidewalk. We think that there would be some traffic calming on one fourteen with the introduction of two new signalized intersections, which Mass DOT is already planning for with their rebuilding of one fourteen. And we're looking to dovetail into their plans.
So is, is there ever been, I mean, you talked about the, you know, the relationship between Merrimack and this site across the street. And obviously, a lot of Merrimack students there, and I agree, it's not optimal the way it's done today. Have you ever considered anything, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, like what they ended up doing in Villanova? By building a, you know, a beautiful stone bridge across the road to connect the new dormitories with the rest of the campus?
It, it is something we have talked about. I think it's something that we've sort of ruled out at this moment, but we have talked about it. We, we've seen it in other places. In this particular instance, you know, and, and in many cases, you know, pedestrian bridges or tunnels, you know, sort of do the opposite of what you want to do. They sort of wall off things and they don't kind of create that, that walkable streetscape that you're trying to do. In this case, you know, again, we, we've talked about it, but we don't think it's really the right, right solution for here. What we've done or trying to do instead is to, you know, introduce again that, that signalized intersection that's got some enhanced sort of pedestrian elements to it so that, you know, when, when pedestrians can cross, they're feeling safe. And when they can't, they're, they're protected from the traffic. While at the same time maintaining that traffic flow, we don't want traffic to back up. So that's the way we've been looking at it. The next couple of pages really are just, again, precedent and, and inspiration images for the types of architecture that we're talking about. The first one are, you know, multifamily buildings that, you know, are like the ones that we are proposing. Both Aimco and Trinity are, you know, proud of the buildings that we build. We've hired Elkes Manfredi for a reason. They've got a lot of skill in many different places to build really noteworthy multifamily buildings, student family building, student, student housing buildings as well. And these are just some images to show this is not cookie cutter. This is not, you know, your typical cookie cutter type of development. It's something we want people really be proud of. And the next page are just some images of the townhouse-style buildings that we're proposing. Again, these start to step down in scale towards the single-family context around the site. So these are all like three, three-and-a-half-story buildings. And then the last page here or the next page are some images of student housing that we're again utilizing as sort of inspirational images for what we're looking to propose. The, the last image is again, just a rendering sort of showing the street level retail, again, sort of trying to activate the streets that would be proposed in this development with housing or other uses above. So lastly, I'll just sum up really quickly the sort of benefits as we see them. And, you know, obviously, we'll talk about the, with you and with others in the town about all of the elements, but, you know, we really wanted to build something that's unique and has a mix of uses. We provide, you know, housing for a mix of family types at some different income levels so that, you know, seniors or, or older people in town can stay in town, new families can stay in town as well, replace the existing housing. But also introduce some other elements like some office space, a hotel and, and the retail. Again, creating some really noteworthy public space, improving those buffer areas around the site, accommodating the future growth of Merrimack. We wanted to activate, make safer Route one fourteen while maintaining the traffic flow, which is very important, obviously. We address many points in the town's master plan, which we've looked at really carefully, specifically as it pertains to housing and affordable housing, economic development and open space. Will make a significant contribution to the town's workforce and affordable housing stock. One of the elements that we are looking at at this point is to utilize either a friendly chapter forty B process or possibly a chapter forty R process that we're looking to work with the town on that would achieve the town exceeding its ten percent threshold as it relates to chapter forty B. So that's something that we can get into more. And while we'll have more multifamily rental units, the number of two and three-bedroom units in the new rental housing will actually not exceed the current number. And in fact, will likely be less. And lastly, you know, we're continuing to do a fiscal impact analysis on our proposal, but we expect there to be a substantial, substantial positive increase in tax revenues to the town once this proposal is built, that built out. So that's something we'll obviously be working closer with the town on as we proceed as well. So that's the end of the presentation. I do want to turn it over to Peter Tam on our team, just to give a very quick overview of the process. And then we can obviously take questions and comments and respond to those.
Thank you, Mike. For the record, my name is.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
After you.
So I was just gonna, I didn't hear anything about parking. What's the parking situation?
So the parking situation. We're proposing most of the parking to be in structured parkings with each of the elements, structured parking garages attached to each of the different elements of the plan. So we're feeling that we've got more than enough parking to meet the market demand. And it's something that, you know, obviously, we'll work with you to make sure that, you know, everyone is comfortable with the ratio as, as we propose it.
Mr. Chairman, with that as a, as a segue, my name is Peter Tam. I'm as the project attorney for this one. And I appreciate coming at the end of this meeting by way of a very long introduction to the team and to the project for the board. But as, as Jim Keith outlined, they've been at this with a very good team for a long time. And I think that conceptual master plan that Mike and Jim have outlined with John's help is reflective of a lot of time and consideration that's gone in both by Trinity, Aimco, Merrimack, and, and a real first-rate team of consultants. As well as it's reflective of, of a lot of input from a lot of stakeholders. And Mr. Chairman, you had opened this session asking what the involvement of the board would be. We would suggest that you'll be seeing a lot of us over the coming months if, if that's okay with you. What we'd like to do is all of those items and those questions that you're starting to formulate, whether it's to do with parking height density, all the relevant impacts that you're starting, you know, I, I can see the gears turning with the questions that are being raised. We'd like to do deep dives on all of them. And as Mike has indicated, we expect to be studying and we expect there to be a peer review on, on quite a number of these elements, whether it's stormwater management with respect to the master plan, whether it's traffic, whether it's parking. And ultimately, what we need for this to be a win-win, both for Trinity and Aimco and Merrimack, as well as for the community, is for the board to work with us on a, in a collaborative way on a process to rezone this project so that it can realize the conceptual master plan that we've outlined this evening. And that's going to mean, what we expect here is probably a, a new zoning district, an overlay zone that would apply to this very large site. And we've done this before in a number of these redevelopment sites. I think what that zoning would achieve in working with you is it would be zoning by plan. So the master plan would reflect the project and the sort of maximum densities, maximum sort of elements and impacts. We would work with you on, on, on identifying what the issues are. The current residential R-five zone doesn't work here for this type of large phased master plan redevelopment. The types of uses that we're proposing, the densities, the fact that floor area ratios and setbacks simply wouldn't work in, in a, in an organized, thoughtful master plan development here. So an overlay makes a lot of sense if, if you as a board agree. And we'd like to work with you so that this board is fully vested and involved in that process. Coupled with that zoning overlay, there would be a map change that would reflect this new overlay. And there would be a development agreement. That development agreement, we've initiated discussions with the selectmen would reflect the other protections that are outside of zoning. So some of the issues that you've begun to identify would, may fall within one or both of these. But issues like the phasing, the construction sequence, the timing, because here, one of the critical issues that we've heard so far is that this project, unlike the existing nearly six hundred units, is going to address the town's shortfall on their subsidized housing inventory. It will address that through a multifamily component that will be all rental and twenty-five percent affordable. So that nearly four hundred units will count towards the town subsidized housing inventory. Those are not units that exist today on the Royal Crest in those six hundred or so units. By building and creating that housing as replacement housing, high-quality multifamily housing that has an affordable element, the town will meet and exceed their subsidized housing ten percent statutory minimum. And they will meet it and exceed it not just now, but after the two, twenty-twenty census for years to come. So when we talk about density, that's an important element to consider. Mike touched on that component might be handled as a subset of this overlay. And it could be done under forty R, which is a smart growth overlay. That may be of benefit. And we've talked with the administration initially that it may be possible to do it under forty R as a replacement forty R, because we understand the town has a liability today for the forty R that was rescinded. We are also considering doing it under forty B, as Mike pointed out. And that could be as a lip or as a friendly forty B. And there are different reasons for doing that. And we can talk about those at another session. Maybe a session where we spend twenty minutes just talking about regulatory balances and get your input on them. But what we would like to do is, is perhaps set up, Mr. Chairman, if it makes sense to you, different sessions where we address different elements. So we can have the traffic engineer come in to report on his findings, the mitigation that's necessary, the impacts that are associated with it. On environmental and sustainability, I think John and, and others on the team can talk about the, the pretty dramatic improvements that will result from master planning this in a very meaningful way. And that goes all the way to stormwater management in terms of water quality and flood control. LID, those types of things that may be of interest to members of the board. We can talk about recreational and, and public amenities. And those are commitments that would probably find their way into the development agreement as opposed to zoning. But it still has bearing on what this board's jurisdiction is, right, in terms of planning for this site. But we, we would like to, you know, with, with your encouragement, we would like to, you know, in an organized and systematic way engage you on each of these aspects of the project, now that you at least have a, a sense of what the, the scope is here. This is a large impactful project that will change this site. And we think it will change the site dramatically in many good ways. Our goal is to leave this site better than it exists today in every aspect. And we have a lot of work to do, not just with you, but with other stakeholders. So but our focus with the planning board, Mr. Chairman, is, is really ultimately on the zoning. And, and making sure that this board is comfortable with the parameters that you will establish and recommend to town meeting.
Okay, so I think, I think basically coming up, and then basically gave us a calendar and said, okay, at these different meetings, we're going to talk about these things and then addressing issues as they came up. So I think that's a good approach to it. What I would suggest is maybe for the next meeting, kind of come up with a schedule. And also, I think at the next meeting, I'd like to have members of the board kind of talk about their initial thoughts, initial concerns, initial items that I think are beneficial, just so we can start kind of hammering those out. So as we address them, we can have those kind of dealt with. One thing that I would like to see, and I'd like to have members of the board add in if there's anything specific that we'd like to see coming up. In the charts provided, they talk about a number of units, but I'd like you to be more specific. Numbers of bedrooms that are existing that are going, that are proposed, not only the number of so many bedrooms, and include everything. We can always take out for the items, you know, you're saying that the Merrimack, that county has put them in, and then we can always adjust.
Yeah.
Floor area ratio, I'd like to know kind of what is being proposed. I know it's a big site, but tell us, give us the numbers. If there are reasons for those numbers, we could talk about that, but we'd really like to have those numbers.
Yeah.
You know, that was something that in the, the project that was here before us, that wound up being a hundred and seventy units and about, about nine plus acres. So, I mean, it's helpful to have the data and then compare it to things like that. So for now, if we could just get the data, and then we'll make comparisons after. The data is the real important part.
Yeah.
Anybody else, heights of buildings, things like that, those, you know, if you don't have it yet, just tell us that. But those are the things I'd like to at least start with so that we can start addressing some of our overall questions before we dive into each of the individuals.
Yeah.
That's all from me.
To 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 pick up on what you said is I think it's really important to have a little bit of context on the density and the things that you asked for. I think help us get there because I mean, I look at it as I'd even like to understand the square footage of what's there today versus what's there going to be in the future. And I'd also like to know sort of, you know, the footprint now versus the footprint coming in the future. I mean, it it you guys have done, you know, extremely good job professionals I've ever seen on on this board. So I commend you from that point of view, but you're asking for a lot. This is far more dense than literally anything in this town. And you're going to have to sell it to the town meeting. So you're really going to have to have a compelling story by the time you're done. So and we will ask you a lot of the questions that the people of the town will ask. You know, so let's, we should get on with it now.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, we look forward to continuing this dialogue again, as I said, this is this for three years. And, you know, we've had a little scores and conversations with stakeholders and town administrators. And I think what we presented tonight is a is a good beginning. And we are committed to working with you and doing whatever it is we need to do to get you comfortable with what it is we're proposing.
Right.
Anything? Let me go to the board and then we'll come, we'll circle back to you at the end.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, my comments, I think they echoed John's. My my, I think what, when this eventually goes to town meeting in whatever format, there's going to be concerns of, you know, density versus the buffering. Because I think when you you end up with this dense of a development, I think there's going to be an expectation for more of a buffer with the the adjacent residential neighborhoods. And and and, you know, we we heard with Avalon Bay, the the concerns about what does this do for property, individual property values, you know, for people in those residential developments? What is, what's the impact to the schools? I think there's, there's got to be a lot of, there's, we got a lot of time here, but there's a lot to consider. So I I I would actually suggest that the future applicant, go back and look at some of those Avalon Bay hearings to to see what the residents of this town, granted, it's a different part of town, but what the residents of the town are generally concerned about. And we can help them with that information, get this to something that we think the two thirds of the residents of this town would go for. This is certainly ambitious, but it's certainly, you know, but it's better than the existing state. But yeah, a lot of work to do here.
Awesome, some very things that I assume that you guys will provide in the future. A fiscal impact study, school children's study. Those kind of things, tax information, again, not everything that needs to need to have answers to at some point in the process. Let's go to Peter.
No, I agree with the comments that have been made. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Peter. Kate.
My only question is regarding if these are rental units or individually owned. I thought I heard a bit of both.
Yeah, so the the there is a little bit of both. So I the the multifamily elements would be rental, you know, the larger buildings, the townhouse units towards the rear of the site would largely be for sale. There may be a small rental element, age-restricted element to those, but largely the townhouse units would be for sale.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think you called them. This is Kelly. So I think this great, great proposal in terms of the energy that it could bring to the town. I certainly would like to move forward, think about the town resources that it's going to take. Just to kind of echo what other board members talked about with schools, those types of components that we've certainly heard that the townspeople are very interested in what it brings as well as what it what it takes.
Thank you. Yeah.
Great, that guy and Jean.
Yep, so a couple of comments. Can you speak to what you envision the public process being like? I mean, as you're aware, we recently permitted an Avalon Distribution warehouse facility where they actually had public meetings for, they mailed to every resident in town, had public meetings at our local BFW to answer any questions. Obviously, in the COVID environment, you're probably for the foreseeable future, not going to be able to do that. So how do you envision engaging the public?
Yeah, it's Jim, I don't know if you want to jump in, but, you know, I can give an overview of what we've done so far and how we're sort of seeing that that proceed.
The we are going to make ourselves available to anybody that wants to take the time to hear this presentation. That means a lot of, we've done them so far virtually. I think those have been pretty successful. We are in the process of trying to meet with as many of butters as possible. But other stakeholders, we can do them individually, virtually. But there's a lot of time that we're prepared to invest, to commit ourselves to getting people comfortable with this. But, you know, it's really up to, you know, people's comfort level given COVID. And we will obviously submit to whatever their wishes are relative to their own safety. But we'll we'll make ourselves available.
Okay, Eton, I don't know if you think this is too premature, but obviously, this is going to be a significant drafting of a zoning effort for a master plan. Do you think it would be worth talking about a working group, maybe naming two plan board members to some type of working group to start that effort?
Yeah, I think it's, I don't, I think it's worthwhile. I mean, I know we talked about it's going to be a long process and it's early, but, I mean, May town meeting is really not that far away when we're turning into having public hearings and getting, there's a lot to do. So I think that's good to try to get as many issues resolved early as soon as possible. So and it can be an informal thing and we can kind of gym sad depending on where it can be in person versus Zoom versus whatever, it can be different hours. So, yeah, is there anyone in particular that would like to be a part of the working group? I'm happy to do it. Is there anyone, though, that really?
They have an interest, Eton, but I'd be glad to do it.
John, John, want anybody else?
I'm interested. This is Aaron.
Okay, all right. So why don't we do John and Aaron? And I think that would be great. And if you guys could maybe every couple of meetings, just report back to us about where things stand. That would be fantastic. And then if you need any assistance from any of the rest of us in terms of starting zoning language things to base on, we can talk, and then Jean, if you could coordinate on your end and with the applicants, who would be good for that.
Yeah, so I would envision a broader group than the two, but so I'll talk to the applicants and see what their thoughts are.
Sure, yeah. And I mean, just with two members of the planning board, it doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be advertised or a quorum or anything like that.
Right.
With a small subcommittee aspect where we bring in other people, we can do that later on. I think this is more just to kind of get the ball rolling and try to head off problems where they arise. Okay, great. I think that's a presentation. And then just be in touch with Jean about your my intention for now is just to carry the agenda. And if you don't have anything new, then okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we have A and R Plan 1600 Osgood, 1600 Osgood LLC. And we have new public hearings, so I'll read my statement. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law and all chapter 30A, section 18, Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that they gather in one place. This meeting of the North End of our Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and the parties at the right end of requirement or 10 can be found on the town's website at northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so by turning to channel eight on Comcast, channel 26 on Verizon, or going online at www.northendoverma.gov or no in-person members of the public meetings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so, just at best effort, we will post on the town on our website, an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive records of the proceeding as soon as possible. If you public would like to participate in this public hearing, please email your questions, comments to Jean and write our planning director at j e n r i g h t at northendoverma.gov. The question or comment will be written receiving and responded to accordingly. All right, Jean, want to tell us about our last items of the evening?
Eton, I'm sorry, but I just noticed a comment came in related to the last discussion item. So in a butter, Joe Robinson questioned, Joe Robinson questioned that they mentioned a significant increase in tax revenue for the town. Can we ask the range of increase base and a base and increase? So he's from Queer Run, he's in a buddy subdivision. I'm sorry.
Okay, great comment, Mr. Robinson.
Eton, you're breaking up.
Something that we'll definitely talk about as we get further into this.
So I will respond to him that that will certainly be part of the fiscal impact analysis that will be required. And I will, I will tell them, we'll bring them up, bring that question up at the next meeting when they come before the board for a discussion item.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just as a heads up.
Okay, for 1600 Osgood, the applicants for both Lot A and B have submitted an application for a modification to their recently approved special permits. They are continuing to work with MAST DOT, however, an access permit is not expected for several months, for several more months. MAST DOT has provided some preliminary information as to what they will require. The mitigation letter is included in your packet. This information has resulted in the need to modify the special permits. The modifications include changes to stormwater design and traffic circulation. Therefore, the application has been set for quarterly witness for stormwater review and TEC for traffic review. I'm awaiting the response. Reviews, the modification application has also been filed with the Conservation Commission. So very late today, I believe we got a response from the stormwater review. However, as I said, it was very late, so I've not even reviewed it in any detail. It has been provided to the applicants and I have not heard a response yet from the traffic review. And we've also asked the fire department to review the revised swat path analysis, and I have not heard back from the fire department. So the applicants are here to provide an overview about what the modification entails. And the stormwater, traffic and fire department review is ongoing.
Great, thank you, Jean. All right, if we could hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board for the record, John Smolak, Smolak and Vaughn, attorney for the applicants, Hillwood Enterprises in 1600 Osgood Street, concerning the property at again, at 1600 Osgood Street. And with your permission, we'd like to just consolidate both hearings into a single discussion to make this as efficient as possible. Participating with me this evening is Mac Ute, Vice President Development of Hillwood, John Plant, Project Traffic Engineer and Principal with Lang and Engineering and Environmental Services. Frank Holmes is an associate and civil engineer with Lang and and also participating for the owner, 1600 Osgood Street LLC, is this evening's attorney, Michael Rosen. As Jean had indicated, we're requesting certain modifications to the site plan review and special permits for both Lot A and Lot B approved by the board back in May 20th. And as Jean indicated, the modifications we're requesting are primarily driven by adjustments being proposed by MAST DOT and it's July 30th mitigation letter, which the board received in their application materials. Just to try to make this as as brief as possible, what we're planning to do this evening is run through the PowerPoint presentation, which we believe the board has received, it's dated September 15th. And starting on slide two is just simply an agenda or a summary of what we planned to undertake and review. First, in terms of the MAST DOT adjustments, again, these modifications are based more upon detailed discussions we were able to have with MAST DOT after the board's decisions were issued back in May. Secondly, in terms of stormwater adjustments, we've made some additional adjustments related to stormwater, as you'll hear very shortly about. And then lastly, as a result of the adjustments, the A and R lots, which were approved back by the board back in June, are being proposed to be slightly adjusted, so we're requesting the board's approval and endorsement of a new A and R plan, which basically shifts about 9,700 square feet from Lot B to Lot A, and you'll hear a little bit more for the rationale for that. So with that said, I'd like to turn the discussion over to John Plant at Lang and who'll run you through the traffic.
Thank you, John. Can everybody hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Just want, just wanted to make sure. Again, my name is John Plant, professional engineer with Lang and Engineering Environmental Services. And I'd like to just walk you through the the initial part of this PowerPoint presentation. Slide three is a depiction of the scenario with the original site plan that you approved. And at that time, we had proposed separating the office facility on Lot A and the in the Amazon facility on Lot B with the Amazon facility accessing Osgood Street at two signals, the northerly and southerly driveways, and the office maintaining the existing driveways into their parking lot that are full movement, unsignalized driveways. And we were going to add, extend the left turn lane going northbound on Osgood Street into the southerly signalized driveway. That was what was proposed and what was approved. And on slide three, I mean, slide four. And on slide three, I mean, slide four, it gives you callouts of what, what has changed based on our discussions with DOT. As John mentioned, there's a, there's a letter in the, in the application from DOT indicating what they would like to see for offsite improvements relevant to mitigating the impact of this project. And what that is, is maintaining those two signals, northerly and southerly intersections, signalized intersections, adding left turn lanes going at the southerly driveway, adding a southbound left turn lane into the gas station, and at the northerly driveway, adding a left turn lane into the signalized driveway at the northerly, northernmost driveway. And that is because they've asked us to convert the two existing unsignalized full movement driveways that service the office building into right in, right out only driveways, restricting left turns into the site and out of the site from those unsignalized driveway. And to make that function properly for the office user, they obviously need to be able to make left turns out of the site. So connector driveways have been made to both the northerly signalized driveway and the southerly signalized driveway, which have impacted the site plan, which we will talk about. So those are the, those are the main changes. There's a, you know, the, the bus drop is still, still there. It's been reconfigured a little bit. And we've also been requested to add a twelve foot wide shared use path essentially between the two driveways. And that will require some additional right of way at some point encroachment into lot B and A to accommodate that. And we'll go through that process with DOT on, on what they need. We've evaluated the impact of that on, on zoning and on other setbacks. And I think we're, we're okay there. So the next slide gives, gives a little bit more detail. Slide five, this shows, you know, the change right in, right out at the, the southern unsignalized driveway and then a connector roadway from the office park, parking lot into the southerly signalized driveway. And lot six depicts what's happening at the northern end of the site. So the same kind of thing where the unsignalized driveway, full movement driveway is being converted into a right in, right out. And to allow for left turns, a connection is being made to the signalized driveway. And those locations on both, both slide five and six, those connectors have been located outside the queue length of any, any queuing of vehicles at the signalized driveway. The memo that we submitted details that details how that operates. And it operates sufficiently adequately. I did talk to TEC this afternoon about their review as, as, as indicated. They haven't formally responded with anything, but I did talk to Sam and he indicated he is comfortable with us saying that we did discuss this in that his, his initial review of it. Everything looks appropriate. He will get into more details, but he, he thought this was inappropriate and would operate adequately. And in just in thinking about that, it's as opposed to the unsignalized driveways, the volumes taking lefts are going to go out signalized driveways and reduce potential conflicts there. So, and then just on slide seven shows where the bus stop has ended up and based on our discussions with, with DOT, just south of, or just excuse me, just north of the existing Osgood landing sign that's out there. And, and you can see attached to that, running parallel to the roadway will be that, that twelve foot wide shared use path for bikes and pedestrians. So there will be some minor widening on, on the west side of Osgood Street to accommodate the left turn lanes and the transitions to protect those left turn lanes. And, and so that will be done in conjunction with redoing the, the shared use path, the curbing and the widening. And we will be overlaying Osgood Street between the limits of our widening. And as John mentioned on, on, on slide eight indicates this, this area in green here indicates a portion of lot B that extended out the driveway is going to be reconfigured and shifted about ninety seven hundred square feet shifted from lot B to lot A, the new lot A. And slide nine shows that in more detail. And again, this, this was being done to, with the connector to the signalized driveway from the office, office parking lot. The common, common part of the driveway that is shared between A and B, that lot line was moved back outside the limits of this, that new connector. So you can see that, that change there. And so that, that kind of summarizes where, where the DOT process has influenced the site plan in, in its adjustments to circulation. And we've maintained the same amount of parking spaces. There's no reduction in parking spaces. We just shifted some around. And as part of that, some of the drainage systems and the landscaping needed to evolve to reflect that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Frank Holmes to walk you through quickly the, just the stormwater adjustments that were made as the result of those changes, as well as some additional investigation that we've conducted to refine and, and finalize the drainage system. Frank?
Just if, before Frank can start it, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to mention a couple of minor things with respect to the, the traffic. We had, we had requested some early feedback from Mass DOT to provide enough certainty for mitigation such that we might be in a position to close on the purchase. And that was the primary driver on that, on that piece. But the other thing I, I did want to mention that John touched upon is that the northern access, signalized access driveway is something that we're going to have further discussions with Mass DOT on. Because we would prefer to have, to, to maintain that northern access driver is the primary drive, or drive for the Amazon trucks. And so we're going to have further discussions with DOT to see whether they might be willing to still keep that separation between the northernmost signalized intersection and the unsignalized drive, I should say. And, and also to see whether they would maintain the full access for that northern signal, unsignalized drive as well. So that's something that's to be discussed further, but it doesn't mean that that is so, so significant as to sort of disrupt us proceeding and going forward subject to, to approval. So, so I just wanted to clarify that. And also, I, I just wanted to just turn the discussion over to Frank. I just wanted to add that piece. So. Frank?
Okay. Yes. Good evening. I'm Frank Holmes with Langen Engineering, and I assume everyone can hear me as well. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. So I'll briefly describe some of the changes that have been made to stormwater and landscaping as a result of, of these changes that are mainly driven by the interconnection of the driveways from the lot A to lot B sites, as, as has already been mentioned. So on slide 10, there's a graphic that shows the, the areas shaded in that have been changed. And I could, you know, go through those in as much detail as you'd like. But, but generally, the, the changes were related to splitting up basins on, on the north side of the site or the left hand side of the sheet to accommodate the new driveway connection. And the other changes were mainly related to adjustments to the bottom of basins as a result of recent groundwater readings that we've received that were higher than we had previously recorded. And so the bottoms of basins were brought up so that we could continue to comply with DEP standards. So the changes were relatively minor, I would say, to stormwater. And we continue to comply with the, with the Mass, Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards, with the town in North Andovers standards, and with the proposed MS four regulations as well. On slide 11, it shows some minor adjustments to some of the landscaping that was made. And again, you know, mainly to accommodate the changes to the driveways and the, and the site circulation. Some of the evergreen screens that were lining the driveway needed to be adjusted in order to maintain safe site distance at these new driveway connections. So, you know, be happy to answer any questions if there are any on those two. But, you know, otherwise I would turn it back to Mr. Smolak.
Thanks, Frank. Just in terms of the A and R plan, as I mentioned, we're just creating a minor modification to the, to lot A and lot B such that with, that with a reduction of ninety seven hundred and ten square feet in lot A brings lot A from fifty, actually with an increase of ninety seven hundred square feet in lot A from lot B just brings lot A from fifty seven point four four six to fifty seven point six eight acres and a corresponding decrease in lot B from one hundred and ten point three five to one hundred and ten point one two acres. And both lots continue to have the requisite lot frontage, lot area and contiguous billable upland acquired under the zoning bylaw. And so we're requesting that the board would vote to endorse the, the new A and R plan and correspondingly vote to, to rescind the A and R plan that was originally approved back in June eighth. And that includes our presentation.
Great. Thank you, John. Jean, any comments?
No, I have nothing additional. I trust that all the peer review comments will be in by the next meeting. And so I've worked with the applicants. We have drafted decisions. However, given the outstanding information, I didn't include them in today's topic.
Okay. So we can continue the public hearing until the next meeting and see if we, if we get everything in to wrap those up. And then can we get a motion to approve the A and R and instruct the planner to endorse the form A?
This is Aaron. I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Aaron and seconded by Peter. John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Peter?
Yes.
Okay. Four, two, zero. Thank you. Okay. So A and R approved and hearings continued until our next planning board meeting.
Jim, also, we just wanted to make sure that the, the older A and R plan is rescinded as well. That was approved back on, at the board's June eighth meeting.
Um, so can I get some, I guess, clarification? I mean, it would, it's still an approval, not required plan. I would just take it that you just wouldn't file it with the registry. I'm not sure that we would take action on that.
Right. It's, it's, it's never been recorded. You know, it's just in terms of starting our highs and crossing our Ts. If, well, we could certainly just go with the latest plan as approved and, and and consider the old plan as, of no force and effect.
I'm sorry, John, other than you returning the miler to me and me shredding it, I mean, there's no, like their vote doesn't get recorded at the registry. So.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, I think we're good. Okay. Thank you, Attorney Smolak and others for the presentation tonight. Appreciate that. Very well done as usual. Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from September first?
So moved.
Second by Aaron.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Peter?
Yes.
Okay, approved. I think Kate had to go.
Eton, can you just clarify who made the motion?
I would if I knew. No.
Jean, Peter made the motion and Aaron seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Peter.
Peter made the motion.
Second.
Second by John. John vote?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. And yes. First day of school tomorrow. Good luck and Godspeed to any of you with children in the schools.
Seriously.
This next week's going to be a nightmare. Okay. With that.
Stay safe.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.